Debra Juarez, thank you so much for taking the time to join us. We really appreciate it. So you're going to leave the Seattle City Council. You decided not to run for reelection. You haven't really talked about why, but so tell your bros here, why you decided, why you, why you are not going to run again?
Well, there's a lot of reasons, but back in 15, I always had shared with people in my inner circle and some community members that I saw myself as a two-term. But I mean, that was kind of my, my basis, like eight years is enough. I was open to a third term, but I wanted, again, you want to see what the job is and what you're doing and if you're making a difference. And the other issue was, quite frankly, you know, after, after just, I feel like a lot, I have a list. I wish you could see my wall here. I have all these things that are stuck on my wall from 2015 that says sidewalks, pedestrian break bridge, 130th light rail.
Your to-do list?
Yeah, I have these little stickies all over from, they're still stuck. If I could turn my thing around, you'd see them. And I felt like, you know what, like Uncle, like I've said this before, like Uncle Billy taught us, Uncle Billy, you know?
Uncle Billy Frank, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, that whole issue that I was taught that in Indian country, when you're a leader, you lead to leave, you leave a legacy, you make sure that the people are there to step in. The big capital projects that I wanted to finish and work on got done. The waterfront, climate pledge arena, Kraken Community, my John Lewis Bridge, my 130th light rail station, my new Lake City Community Center. And I could, I don't want to just brag and go on, but the point was, I feel like as a leader for this great city and my district, that I can actually point at brick and mortar and say, we did this. We all got together somehow with a thousand committee meetings and got it done. And that's more important to me than performative politics, than a slogan, than a protest. Cause a protest in and of itself is just a protest. And we all know, being people of color, that we've been involved in our protests our whole lives. Just our existence in some of these spaces is a protest. And you know, there's other things I want to do.
Like, such as?
I don't really know. I gotta look for a job. I mean, it's kind of funny in a way. I'm serious. I, I, I am not ruling out another public office, maybe a higher public office or a different public office. I'm not ruling that out. I really want to still explore more into Indigenous people, mainly children and youth into sports and work more closely with our teams that we have here and hopefully our NBA team. I'm been a bit a big supporter of Seattle Storm and their training facility, which will be breaking ground on Monday. Work closely with them to get that done. So I have a lot of fire in me still. So there's a lot of stuff I still want to build and do for our great city. And also I know this sounds kind of cliche. I really want to focus on economic vitality in communities where I want them to invest in themselves and build that brick and mortar that's organic that they choose, not that they have to go to some nonprofit and explain to a whole board, this is why I need 20 million. You know what I mean? This is what community needs. Cause if you have any community, and I don't care where it's at, and I've learned this just, just working with tribes in Indian country, rural communities, east of the mountains, people need jobs. You give people jobs, you give them hope. You give them hope, you give them an opportunity to take care of themselves and their children. And I was lucky enough to see that. I mean, I grew up, as you would say, materially poor, but not emotionally or culturally poor. And it's such a simple, it's such a simple line that people need jobs. They don't need another, you know, they don't need a methadone clinic. They don't, I mean, yeah, maybe they need all this stuff. And I gotta be careful how they say this. I guess my focus is this. When people look at communities of color and what they need, their focus is always, it's always social services.
Yes, yeah.
And I get tired of that. And I remember the black community saying that just 20, 30 years ago, why is it we just have convenience stores and pawn shops?
Right.
Why isn't there, not that I'm advocating for a Walmart to be put in the middle of the CD and we have displacement and gentrification issues, but why aren't we thinking bigger with these big corporations, multi huge, you know, the big people that this is their headquarters? Why aren't they citing these big places, not fulfillment centers for people who want to do, who want to work in the tech industry? Why aren't we having those apprenticeship programs in the north and south end? Why aren't we, why aren't we doing that? And I guess, and I work closely with Dr. Crawford at Narsil College. And we have these conversations. We have dinner at least once every other month to make sure we're all on the same page. Same with the Kraken folks, I meet with them and their, their CEO and Simon Properties, I meet with them. Because this city, this map of this great city, there's so much potential here. We have so much potential to do so much more. I think I was telling you guys this before we went on camera. And when I was telling some of these youngins coming up, you know, the social justice warriors that, you know, they want to, I go, that's all great, but you gotta invest in yourself, not just emotionally and culturally and being out there in the streets. I get that. But you gotta invest in yourself intellectually and create brick and mortar for your people.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't get that. I mean, that's one of the things. So much of these movements are subsumed with ideology. And the basic thing is, small business runs every city in this country. And you know, but, but it's the Amazons, it's the Microsofts who get all the attention. But if it wasn't for small businesses, neighborhoods wouldn't exist, communities wouldn't exist. I mean, the CID is a classic example, but it's replicated over and over in Conclaves, all over King County. And you know, I just wish, once in a while, I mean, you're so right on about methadone clinics. It's social service because it, it, it makes them feel better, like they're really doing something. But they really aren't. They're perpetuating a stereotype and kind of ghettoizing these communities by putting them there. I mean, the mega shelter was one of those things, right?
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't that we were against housing the unhoused. It's like, why are you concentrating all the services here? Cause it's not creating jobs for the community.
Yeah. And it becomes a circular argument. I've had those conversations where, well, we're citing it there because that's where the problem is. I go, the problem is there because you're citing it there.
Exactly.
And here we go again. Here we go again. I, I, God bless, you know, we have clinics and we have nonprofits and we have food banks. I get it. But when you drive through there, then all you're seeing, every message to any nine or 10-year-old is, we're poor, we have nothing, we don't have a new community center, we don't have light rail, we don't have a major job center. We don't, I mean, it's like, you can literally look around and see places of things you don't have.
And it takes the image of that neighborhood or that district and kind of puts them in that category of being lesser than, or a tough place to go, or a bad place to go. So that only, I think, just adds to that whole perception, which is not good.
What you mean perception is, are we, are we skirting around the issue of this kind of victimization politics? Where, you know, I don't want the non, I don't know how to say this. Let me say this correctly. I don't like it when people project on me how I'm supposed to behave and think and speak based on what they think a Native American Latina woman is supposed to say or do.
Exactly.
I don't walk around saying I have these open wounds and I'm a victim. I walk around thinking, I'm articulated, I'm smart, I'm educated, I have a cult, the rich cultural history. Do not project on me what you think I'm supposed to be doing as a Native American. It used to happen a lot as a lawyer. Was a Native American, you could understand the environmental issues. I know you saw the commercial with the Indian, the fake Indian with the tear running down, but that's not me. So let's stop there. And so I try to caution our young folk, don't believe in yourself and don't look to those folks as the reflection of who you are, cause that's who you will stay. They'll see you that at 20 and they'll see you that at 40 and they'll see you that at 60. And then they'll see your kids that way, you know?
Cause they're still the dominant culture and they're defining your existence. I mean, that's, but that's sort of a classic Seattle liberal thing where, where, you know, they walk like liberals, they smell like liberals, but man, when it gets down to the brass tacks, they kind of fall apart.
It does. And I, I will give a more generic example when we were, and still, which has changed since 2020. But you know, when there was the, you know, whether you call them sweeps or removals, whatever you call them, it's inhumane to allow people to live like that, period. Right? It's just living underneath a freeway is inhumane. It's just, it's just more than the humanity, the lack of humanity there, the fact that we, we're not being able to get these people indoors. So two, three years ago, like you said, the whole liberal mask, you know, I'm, I'm a good, I care about this, this, that, whatever. You know, the Seattle liberal. So one minute it's like, you know, no sweeps and I got my T-shirt on and I'm screaming at you and how dare you, blah, blah, blah. You're criminalizing the homeless. But in the last two years, when the homeless showed up at their community center, at their lakefront property, at their, at their park, in their public spaces, behind their house, in their neighborhood, all of a sudden it's like, oh, we gotta do something about this. We can't have this. All of a sudden, the no sweep signs weren't in their yard anymore. I'm just saying what I've seen and watched and I wa, and I see a lot. And I think that kind of, what's the word I want to use when you're, I don't want to say, I almost said it, but I'm not gonna say it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's honest, because it's kind of like, it's a problem until, it's like, it's like what we saw with the drug epidemic. It was happening to our people, black and brown people, left and right dying. But now that when it happened to somebody whose daughter, somebody from who has wealth, all of a sudden it became a pandemic and we gotta do something about it. It's when it hits those neighborhoods, then it becomes a crisis, then it becomes an issue. And then we've been saying, our people have been dying from fentanyl for the last five years, almost 10. It's ravaged our communities, particularly on our reservations. But now that it's out there with other folks, you see what I'm saying? When it hits certain neighborhoods, that the whole, the whole thinking changes because now it's on them. And all of a sudden, it's either a problem or, well, I didn't know that there was going to be 42 tents at my community center. I think you need to remove them. I'm like, what happened to the no sweeps? Remember that? And you're screaming at my face when I was down here, you know, being down there watching, working with parks to move tents out of, behind the library. I could go on and on about hotspots and RVs and being verbally assaulted by some of these folks. They're not, they weren't saying that, you know, when, when they were showing up in their communities.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the classic thing too, it's like COVID, right? We mobilized, the country mobilized so quickly on COVID because it affected everybody, infected white people. If it was just communities of color, our communities would be ravaged right now. I mean, it is something that I think about sometimes is what if we mobilize at the same degree for COVID to tackle homelessness, to tackle drug abuse? That could be something that would really work, but we just don't have the will because like you say, it doesn't affect enough of the dominant culture to make a difference.
Right. And I mean, I know we could probably have a whole mini-shows just about that. And I like how you say dominant culture because I can tell by your age, that's a term I haven't heard for a while. That was like, kind of skirting around, you know, the dominant, but, but you're right, but.
That's Matt's way of saying white people. No, but that's, but, but it's, it's dominant culture because if you take immigrants from China that newly arrive and populate the east side, they have no concerns, the same concerns we do in Seattle, because they don't have the history, they don't recognize the history. So their, their experience is more white adjacent because they were the dominant culture where they came from. So that's why I think it's an appropriate term.
No, you're right. And you're absolutely right. And I guess I'm still in, we'll have to have another interview when I'm not, have this job anymore.
We're gonna do that. That's, yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to go back. Last time you, you and I talked, last time, cause Matt was ill, he was dodging you.
Allegedly.
Yeah, allegedly, yeah, allegedly.
Did me up twice. I don't know.
That was the report. You talked then a lot about during the time of the protests, how people showed up at your home and also the kind of fallout on all of that for you. How much of that had to do with your decision to not run again?
Um, you use the word fallout, which I find interesting. Um, you know, I've had a lot of time to think about everything. And when I was in it, it was really difficult when people came to my house and they always came at night, between 10 and midnight, you know, put tape on their license plates, broke things, mailboxes. I could go on and on. And they did the same thing to Mayor Durkin and they did the same thing to Alex Peterson, but they also did it to me. Bullhorns calling me the most vile names. I actually thought in some ways when I was being called anti-black and anti-Indigenous, I found that interesting. It was very performative and it was dangerous and it was crude. I think they, they're a certain group of people, unfortunately, took this whole term that we learned from Martin Luther King about being woke. They made it a slur that we're now being beat up with by the right. But it was so performative, but it was also, and if it was just performative, but it became dangerous. And it was, it was trauma-filled. And I kept journals through that whole period. I keep, I'm a journal writer. I'm a journaler. And I have like six journals filled with what all would happen that whole period. And I think the thing that hurt me as a person and also as an elected, and I'll just say it because I think we should, because we're human, is that a lot of my colleagues didn't care. I was expendable.
Your colleagues on the council?
Yeah. It, it was for the cause. It was to show how, I'm gonna use the word woke they were, or how so, you know, and, and as a, as I've gone through life like you, we're older and we understand what happened with the civil rights movement. We'd been in marches, I'd been in takeovers, I was on the Nisqually-Puayalup River. I took over Cascadia. I mean, I was, I was a daybreak star. I never expected that type of hate. And I think what offended me, will hurt me, and my daughter was here, is a majority of those people were, were not, were white people.
Hmm, yes.
I'm just gonna say it, young white kids with their, you know, Black Lives Matter T-shirt. The black community was phenomenal and phenomenal to me. They called me, Reverend Walden called me to make sure I was okay. Omari called me to make sure I was okay. I mean, I could list, you know, all these stalwart leaders and they were offended and angry and they defended me and they called me to see if I was okay. And I can't say that for the majority of my colleagues. So the thought that I had been a public servant, public defender, legal services, dedicated my life to all these quote-unquote "social justice" issues, I actually did it. I didn't just walk around with a T-shirt and scream. I just have a slogan, actually went in the courtroom and I did those things. Um, I, I, at first I was just like I'm doing right now, I was just kind of dumbfounded. Because I thought, you know, any kind of pledge by an elected, um, you know, I guess what was bothering me, and I've said this publicly, so I can say it again, is that as elected officials, we have so many platforms with social media. We, you know, we're on TV. We have a comms department, you know, we, we have so many platforms. We have Twitter, Facebook. We can get on Channel 21, we're on TV twice a week. You know, I felt like, maybe it's a generational thing, but I didn't feel like I belonged at the front lines, at the barricades doing that. I felt that was the community's job to do that. Um, but there's so much more there that I could, I would love to unpack someday because I'm still thinking about it. But it was very traumatic. It did change my behavior being in crowds because I was verbally assaulted more than once. Never by a person of color, by the way. Always by a Karen, I'm just gonna say it, and some other, you know, some, always some white kid from Capitol Hill with the T-shirt on, all of 22 screaming at me about racism and I'm anti-Indigenous. I had that happen to me in the case you see. That I just, because I was raised, that I remember now, this is me, Debra, how I was raised. Whatever my differences were in Indian country or tribal leadership, I would never do that to an elder and I would never do that to an elected. I just, it wouldn't even cross my mind to do that.
It's, it's respect. It's a cultural thing.
And it's the humanity about it too. I just wouldn't. And I would never have this attitude whenever I hear people chant, you know, what do we want? We want it now. That whole privilege of screaming outside my house, what do you want now? How, how have you been affected? Have you been denied the right to, have you been affected by genocide, slavery? The right to not have education, healthcare? Have you had to fight tooth and nail for your land for just the right to exist, to go to school? A lot of privilege out there.
Oh, that, that's really the main thing. It is privileged because most people of color understand that there's a consequence every time you open your mouth in public, right? But a lot of white people, especially white kids who grow up in privilege, they can say whatever they want because there's never a price to pay.
Yeah. And I think social media has a lot to do with that. There's no accountability. Because in my day, if you're gonna talk shit, you're gonna say it to my face.
Yeah, and risk a beat down.
We need to talk about it. We need to talk about what, you know, you want to step to this? Okay, we need to talk. You don't show up at my house at 11 o'clock at night with a bullhorn, all of them wearing, you know, hoods and umbrellas so you can't identify them. I mean, it was really, they were terrorizing me physically. And, and I won't even tell you about the threats that went through SPD and some other things that happened to myself, threats to my, to my bodily person and my daughters. That's a whole nother story and a whole nother show that I don't want to share too much about. But, um, and the, the interesting thing is, all credible threats, all going through the criminal system, two of these, of these men, of the three, were mad that I had voted to defund the police. I'm like, ah, you got the wrong Latina. There's four of us. I'm Juarez. It was the other three. So you might want to, I don't know. But there were severe consequences to that.
Plus you had refused to make that pledge.
Yeah, I did refuse.
Of defending the police, yeah.
Because I thought it was incredibly dangerous, performative. And I think I wrote, I said that thing where, you know, you're writing a check you can't cash. You're, you're, you're creating this dream, this nirvana that somehow we're gonna defund the police by 50% and the world's gonna be better. I don't know what world you were growing up in, but we had to move forward progressively, incrementally, big steps, little steps, big steps to get to justice. And if you've never had to do that walk, then it's easy for you to throw on a T-shirt and scream at someone like me outside my house at 11 o'clock at night with a bullhorn. I come with a whole band, literally a whole band. I could hear the cars coming. It was just, it was, um, it was, it was traumatic. But the other part was though, I have to say this to my brothers and sisters on the Yakima Nation and Talela and Nisqually and Puyallup, Suquamish, Snookami, all those tribes, Puyallup called me and wanted to come here. Particularly the Yakimas, they were not playing. They were like, we will send a detail around your house. Talela offered to, for me to stay up there if I'm not safe. Three police, tribal police departments offered a detail around my house because they heard about it. I had tribes calling me from North Dakota, my own tribe, and they, I'm just gonna be very candid with you. They're like, what the hell is wrong with these white people? Don't they know who you are? Why are they coming at you like that? We don't even do that. It's just somehow that summer, people just unleashed this thing where they felt it was okay. And I can understand the anger and the protest and the movement and why you want to move social justice forward. But it's kind of like, to me, at some point, it just got so performative. And the people screaming the loudest had so much privilege and had no business doing that and saying that they were allies. Okay, what does that mean? Does that mean coming at my house and breaking my mailbox and doing stuff to my windows where we had to get shades and extra locks and the things that they did to Councilor Peterson's house? And of course, what they did to Mayor Durkin's house, what they tried to do to Carmen Best's home, what they tried to do to Mike Fong's home? That was just pure terrorizing. You weren't getting a point across about Black Lives Matter. You weren't getting a point about the humanity, about what we need to do to, to look at the criminal justice system, you know? And what happened at the end? How much did we actually defund? Not even 11 or 12%? And we had to put the parking officers back at SPD. Nothing really happened.
And we're also, we're also still feeling the effects of that because the police department, as we talked to Adrian Diaz just recently, is still trying to find close to 400 officers that we now lack. Okay?
Well, we know that they.
That's what he liked, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they have the ability, at last I checked, during budget, and I could, my numbers could be wrong. But at the time, I think, and I, and I, I talked to Adrian, our chief Diaz, at least once every other week, we check in. The problem was, is that they had 140 offices or positions open and I understood that. And the 80 positions that they wanted was, we were like, okay, well, there's a budgetary and I don't want to get too wonky, but the point was, let's work on filling those 140. And if we need to come back for those other 80, we should. But the other issue was this, and this is what Adrian was trying to get at and Councilor Peterson and Chief Diaz and other folks, is that we're having, they had just hired their senior recruiting team right around budgets, so they hadn't, they were just onboarding them to do this aggressive recruitment. But we were getting, we weren't getting, people were comparing us to Portland. Like, why would we want to come work there? And guess who all of this hurt the most? Who got the longest 9/11 call times? Who's got the most crime? And I get police reports every week from Chief Diaz. I get a dashboard that goes into my North Star newsletter that he did for us. And now I think everyone gets it, but he did it for me. Our communities of color.
Of course.
Or versus still getting 9/11. I mean, other Queen, they're all, they're, they're doing good. Who got hurt the most? Do you think it's these, these white kids on Capitol Hill? No. It's communities of color. People getting shot. Our babies getting shot. Our children worried about walking to school. That's what got, who got hurt. Now all of them are quiet. All those ones that were screaming and sending me the most filthy letters and leaving these horrible voicemails, hear nothing. Crickets. And you know what? I'm happy. I learned a lot from that and I would never wish it on anyone. But it only made me more resilient and stronger about being honest and being truthful and also understanding that my path and who I am matters.
So what do you think going forward now, as far as the council? Because this is a major shift going on. I mean, one of the, one of the reasons that, you know, personally, I wanted you to stick around is because there's not going to be any senior people to understand true governance on the council. They're gonna be.
I know. Right up until even yesterday, the day before, Mayor Harrell is still saying, you know, it's not too late. A couple of times he almost got me like, come on, come on, sis. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know that I'm still gonna be here and be involved. I don't know what capacity. I'm hoping that the voters take into, I, I hope we came out of this fever dream of this, what do we want? We want it now, performative politics, slogan-driven bullshit. And I hope that people elect people that are like, actually wanting to lead, not just a stepping stone somewhere else, but actually want to lead and make those hard decisions and do the homework, not to show up for the, you know, the signing or the TV or the photo op moment. I'm not, I'm not laying that at anyone's feet right now, but I don't know what's gonna happen.
I just hope that voters get more practical. I'm just tired of governance through ideology because it gets you nowhere.
I know.
Well, and I know, and I think that had be, that has become the image of the Seattle City Council that people look at that.
It, it has. And, but it isn't just Seattle. You saw what happened in Portland, San Francisco, LA. It isn't just this, there was this whole sweep of, and I get it, like, some people think it was a success that we got elected leaders leading and paying attention. But you're right, the, the performative piece, I hope we're over this. I really do. I hope we're over this whole, you know? And the other thing I have to say as a leader, an elected leader, and I know this, is that, and I know you probably know this as well, and I don't know if this comes with age or it's just, but I knew this when I was 25, government doesn't fix everything. You cannot lay every social ill at the feet of government and say, you need to give me a house, you need to give me healthcare, you need to give me education. I mean, it just, the world doesn't work like that. Capitalism doesn't work like that. You, you give people tools so they can do those things to make the, the, the whole greater. And so when people just come at you and say, you know, I want $50 million for housing, who's gonna pay for that? How does that work? Who's gonna roll up their sleeves and do that? That's what I would do. I did my homework. I always read everything. I made sure that I understood. And you know, sometimes it was difficult. The last couple of years, I found myself not as engaged as I used to be the first four years. Cause a lot of it was just playing defense, just trying to get people to have common sense. And I hope, and I don't know, you guys tell me from the outside looking in, does it look like there's been some change on the second floor or some movement with Seattle City Council? Cause I know our brand is, is not, is not doing well. I, I have to laugh when the people want to show me polls and I'm like, I don't need a poll to tell me that people think Seattle Council sucks. I don't need a, I don't need a poll for that. In fact, I'd rather not see it, quite frankly.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a perception of hope, I think. And that's why it, it's gonna be a real interesting election. I mean, when you look at, you know, Mayor Harrell's numbers and favorability, they're pretty extraordinary given the times, you know? But I think the performative stuff, it all happened when we. But I think the performative stuff, it all happened when we were at the height of prosperity, you know? Communities were doing well and then COVID hit and Black Lives Matters hit. And we were just unprepared.
I called it the trifecta, the trifecta. We got COVID, we got the recession, and then we had the social upheaval.
Right.
And as I shared with certain people, including Mayor Durkin, when we talked, no local official got unscathed, left unscathed. Cause if you were like a congressperson in DC, you weren't on the front lines here when all that was going down. And all, one of those things on their own would knock you off your feet. Imagine having three of them. So I always defend to some, you know, and I'll say it. What Mayor Durkin and Chief Carmen Best had to deal with was unbelievable. And I hope someday they tell their story, cause I'm good friends with both of them and I talked to them. And we talked during the issues and, and, and supported each other, but and we have our differences agreements. I've known Mayor Durkin for 30 years. I've known Carmen for just almost as long, I think. Um, and we, we're around the same age, same sensibilities. It caught us, cause we were all targets, to where like, man, we dedicated our lives to, to social justice, you know? We were out there in the day was before some of these kids were born. I made it possible for you to stand out in front of my house and call me a cunt. And a, a corporate bootlicker and to spray paint the most vile things all over my street. Spray paint. I don't mean coming up like, and then horrible, and I just lost my mom and some of the things that they wrote about my mother. And the things I saw, some of the homophobic and pictures they took of what they put in front of, I mean, it, it, it's, people don't even know what this pictures that they did in front of Mayor Durkin's house, which they were trying to do in front of Carmen Best's house. And, um, and, and on some sense, I can forgive for that. I can, I can now. If you talked to me a year ago, two years, 18 months ago, I probably would have still been like, I'm still, I'm still traumatized in a way and I still have a lot of anger that I haven't really reconciled.
I can tell. You know, the other thing that when I brought, I said the word fallout earlier is that that whole period and the way what had happened during COVID and public health officials being attacked. School board, school board members being attacked, city council members being attacked.
Voter, voter, yeah.
But it's also, why would anybody want to run? Why, why would anybody want to be a public servant?
Well, I'm glad you asked that. And this is probably why this is your, my first interview about doing this. And you, and I, I, I don't know if I answered your question if I went around it, but I didn't mean to. That is one reason why I don't want to run again. I love being a public servant. I've been a public servant for over 30 years. And I'm not saying that no one should challenge me or question or have debate and change my mind. I'm open to that as a former judge. I get it. But the, the physical attacks on my, on my, my property, the, the physical threats to my daughters, to myself, to my husband. Um, the fact that the tribes came in and I didn't want to start like a race war. I was like Yakima was ready to come over and it's like, why would you? Cause I, I kind of feel like I don't want to.
Yeah.
And then I think, well, maybe, maybe it's, um, common sense isn't in vogue anymore. Conventional wisdom isn't, is status quo. You know, that we need to topple that. Okay. Um, maybe I'm just older and it's time to recognize that there's another generation coming up the ranks that feels different and that's fine. That's the natural progression of things. I should, I don't think people who are elected should stay there for 30 years. I don't. Um, I mean, I just don't. And I didn't want to be one of them. I understand why people want to do it. But what we went through, that whole trifecta, um, I'll say that, that was a major decision of me not wanting to run again. I don't, I'm tired of being verbally assaulted when I'm physically in crowds or out and people recognize me during that one period. It's really toned down a lot. But for a while there, I had to be careful when I was out.
Well, you know, most people don't even rec- realize, even in the best of times, elected leaders of color and women, the baseline for the number of like vile things that are said to you is much higher.
Way higher. Way higher. Can I say this though? It, it started before the summer of 2020.
Oh, yeah.
I'll tell you, the first time it started, the first time it started was when we denied a street vacation. And everybody came after the women on council because
Right.
We were the one, even though this had nothing to do with basketball. Somehow people got it in their minds that there was, the Sonics were at the city limits, standing there with the basketball. And if these women on council just voted yes, they would be here. That is complete and utter bullshit. So that's when it started. That was in May of 16. Then in August of 16, I mean, I got death and rape threats then. We were on the Samantha Bee Show. Go back and look at that clip, the Seattle Sea Words. And then in August, I got, I got called filthy names and threats. The block the bunker movement when we were trying to get the North Precinct, which by the way, many of those council members that voted no had voted 11 times yes before that August vote in 16, cause I had done my homework. I wanted to see where the votes were. And I reminded a few of those council members, you know, the, for the last 11 votes, you were a yes. And now the 12th vote, because all these people are screaming at you with T-shirts on, now you're a no. Okay. I see how this is gonna work. So it didn't just start. It, it's like that. For me, people got permission back in 16, that it was okay to do that to us. And it just escalated. It just escalated. It got worse. And it was women of color who they came at. I don't know what I, I, well, I have my, my theories and my feelings, but a, a lot of it felt like it was safe to come at me. It was safe to come, um, it was just safe to be disrespectful to me. To a black and brown woman, black and brown woman. I was just talking to somebody about this the other day. A black woman who used to be on the women's commission and we've had these long talks. And if you don't have, you want to really be an ally, then you need to step up and say, and no one would do it when they were coming after the women on council, when they were coming after me over the North Precinct. Nobody defended me. Nobody said anything. And then it just got worse. It's like permission was granted. It's open season. Come to City Hall, call us up, come to our house, call me names, threaten me, get the police involved. Uh, to me, that's not a social justice movement. That's just pure terrorizing.
Yeah. The, the thing, again, that word fallout from that is that people like you who have a background in public service, lawyer, judge, perfect advocate or person that you probably want to be a public servant.
Yeah.
Will, will not run now because who needs that kind of stress? Who needs that bullshit?
That's the irony of this. And I, I'll say this, cause I've said it before and I'll say it again. You've heard me say this Enrique, six of the nine council members were all LAs. Legislative assistants. That's a pipeline. Who do you think mentors those folks to make sure that they can? Here's the backpack. Here's all the tools you need to get there. Here's how you spend, you know, your time. I'm not taking that away from the ones that got elected. He used to be formal LAs. Now, whatever disagreement I have with some other council members who I'm still, I'm all friends with everybody. A lot of us came by this honestly. We had to have sterling resumes. I did not get to walk through the world with the confidence of a mediocre white guy. And be uplifted and rewarded because I knew all the right people and knew how to get in there and it was gonna work for me. What world do we walk in, you and I, where there, that's why there's so much pearl clutching with some of these folks, because no one has ever, they've never had to have adversity. They've never had to see what it's like to, to look at a position and say, I, I, I've never, I can't do that. I'm, I'm not safe in that space. The world is open to them. It was made for them. We've learned to go, we've learned to obstacles. We learned how to get over it, how to get around it. Is it a degree? Is it this? Is it that? You know, um, a lot of these folks never had to do that.
We've learned how to code switch, how to talk differently in different settings.
Yeah. And this is why I, I have a lot of respect for Mayor Hill, cause I've known him for many years. And the reason why I think Mayor Harold's numbers are high as well is, um, besides being a good friend, we have our differences. Don't get me wrong. You, you know, we have our differences. But we, we can manage to talk through those and there's not, there's not this, this nastiness. But the other thing is Mayor Harold was on city council for 12 years before he went up to the seventh floor. So he knows how it works. He understands the power balance and the discussions that need to happen between him and I. You know, and there's sometimes we haven't agreed and whipping votes here, or I don't agree there, or let's change, but we talk. We can't do that on the second floor. When I first got to city council, I thought, oh, you know what? You go down, you'd like, like tribal council and being legal counsel and working in the governor's office. You go down the hall, you talk, what's the problem? You talk to the Rs, you talk to the Ds. How do we fix this? How do we get it through? This is what we're looking at. This is our main goal. Nobody gets everything they want. You know, you always get another bite at the apple. None of that was on the second floor, still kind of isn't. But when I first got there, that's what I thought. Naively, I would go to everyone's office and try to talk to people. Then it started dawning on me. First of all, a lot of folks hadn't adjusted to the district system who were there.
Right.
And the other part was the side, I hate using the word the silo, but it, it literally was that. There's no room to caucus. There's no room to say, well, where do we agree? Central staff isn't allowed to share with other, if, if central staff is working on a piece of legislation for me or an amendment, they can't share with my eight other colleagues what they're working on with me. So the duplicate, you can't, there's no, there's no mechanism, the way they've created it, because the outside world, and I'll just say the goofy liberal world who thinks that we're, there's some secret room on the second floor that's smoke filled and we're sitting there going, boo, ha, ha, ha. We're passing this secret legislation that we have to be so transparent that nothing happens. Because what you see on TV is not real. It's performative.
So.
And that's unfortunate.
You hit it earlier that you, you're gonna look at what you want to do next.
I gotta look for a job, so you might have to hire me.
We'll work on that. But you also left the door open that you would run for office again.
Yeah. I, I, at first I was like, no way, but I'd say in the last, I don't know. I don't know. This is kind of personal, but I'll, I'll share. I think Mayor Harold and some of my people that came to me and, and defended me and took care of me and believed in me. Cause after all that, I start doubting myself. Um, and that's a really scary place to be. When other people are doing things and you're the odd person out and then you take a beating for it and then you start thinking, well, maybe I am. Maybe I am wrong. Maybe my values are offline. Maybe I am, I don't know. And so I'd say the last six months, maybe seven months, because other elected leaders and particularly tribal leaders have made me feel whole again. Like this is what, you know, cause you can't just, you have, you have, we've given you a lot of gifts, Deborah. We've mentored you. We've loved you. Uncle Bernie did, Uncle Billy, you know, Ramon, I could rattle off tribal leaders, you know, um, you know, Roberto Mestes, you know, Larry Gossett, all those were my mentors. Um, you, I, I feel like a responsibility to them that we've done this for you. And I feel responsible. And this is, I think, what it means to, to be part of a tribe and kinship. I owe it to those folks. I'm feeling emotional now, um, to not just walk away. And I don't know what that is. I mean, I'm gonna say this as a cut half jokingly, but I, I'm also not naive enough to think this. I mean, it would, I would love to be governor, but we all know that, you know, the way the politics line up in this state, I don't think that would be, I think we know who's gonna end up being our next governor.
Yeah. Well, I, I hope you continue work helping native people because they're so underrepresented. And they are so powerless. You know, and it just breaks our heart, cause Enrique and I have done a number of shows about that and it's just the sheer lack of ignorant, I mean, just the ignorance around tribal issues. No one knows. And thus no one cares. I think if they really knew, people would care more. Because it is, you know, I mean, enough of the land attribution and stuff before meetings and all that.
The land acknowledgements. Oh my God.
Isn't that, that's performative.
It's ridiculous. Unless you're gonna give it back.
Yes.
I, I literally don't care. We don't even do that back home.
I know.
My res, it's, I, some goofy white person. I don't know who the hell thought that up. But institutions pay a ton of money and they've asked me and I'm like, uh-uh, oh no. I did it a couple of times because a certain tribal leaders asked if I would, but I did it the right way. A territorial acknowledgement in the sense of the way we were raised to do that. Okay. This is where I think it all came from. And then I don't know who commodized it and, and Europeanized it and made it to this goofy. I want to recognize that, okay, you recognize that you're on stolen fricking land. You have no power to give it back. So what are you talking about? Oh, I see. You want to be politically correct and be performative to show everybody you're down. Okay. I got that. But in the meantime, you're harassing the only Native American woman on council.
Exactly. Yeah.
Got that. Okay. Got it.
But, but the culture is so much part of the Northwest, Washington. It's here. It's amongst us, but it's not recognized. That's what is the, so ironic.
But there's so many phenomenal young, young bloods coming up between 40 and 60 that are just killing it legally, socially. I mean, look at Estelle Lacerre at the Salina Health Board. Look at Derek at, um, Chief Seattle. When Colleen ran for mayor, when Casey Sixkiller ran, these are all good friends. Gabe Galanda, phenomenal lawyer. I mean, I could go Noreen Hill at Mother Nation, Jackie, Jackie McCormick at Rise Above. I mean, these, this is a whole huge generation, you know, I'm 20 years, 15 years. I got 15, 20 years on these guys, but that's what I look at that gives me hope. Those are the ones that call me and say, you're not leaving us elder. We need you in the game, girl. Auntie, they call me auntie. We need you. And it, and it's, the Asian community is like that with me too. A lot of young Asian women coming up the ranks that call me auntie. And I am so honored by that. Because they were raised right to value me and my wisdom. They don't have to agree. When I was raised and I remember I represented Yakima and a lot of tribal leaders and particularly Yakima, my own tribe, but we always knew that, um, when I was represent, when I would be in tribal council chambers or we'd be, you can have an elder there that's a leader and that has wisdom. That is more important than how many degrees you have. That has been very clear when I go home and it's, I know that I, we don't value that. I mean, and we value it, but not the way that the non-Indian world does in some ways. So I may disagree, but I would never humiliate, confront, or belittle an elder that I know made it possible for me to sit there with a law degree and work with them. I would never presume that ever. The thing, the values in Indian country is that people really value, um, being stingy is like the worst thing you can be stingy, selfish, starting every sentence with I, me. And so I have to code switch when I go home. You don't do that. Um, I had a hard time with, you know, um, when I got in office because my staff and comms would say, you know, cause I think I've, I've, I've issued maybe five press releases since I've been council president. If I have something to say, I'll say it. If I don't, I don't need to. If I can get it done the way I need to get it done and it gets done, that's, that's what's important. Um, but I, I really do feel on the emotional side that I owe not just Indian country, but I owe this city and I owe my constituents and I all, I know all those people that have helped me get here. I still owe them a debt of public service that I'm not done doing. And I'm not sure what that is.
Okay. Let me throw this out. Attorney General?
No.
Gotta keep going down the list.
No, let's not do that.
Give me a hint. Well.
I don't know. I don't know. I, I don't know. That's just it. I'll be real, I'm, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be coy here. I'm so caught up in what I'm doing now with being council president and being on Sound Transit and managing and getting the Indigenous Advisory Council and working on Light Road. Just, I'm so, there's some big stuff I got. Oh, and I'm working on Memorial Stadium. I'm so excited about that project. We've been working on that with Sally. I started with Sally Backshaw back in 2016 on that. Finally getting big stuff over the finish line. Um, that's, that's top three of my list before I walk out the door. I, I, I just, I, I'm, I'm doing that thing where I'm just listening to people tell me, cause for so long, I just kind of shut down. You know what I mean? I was like in, like I said, this posture of just defending myself, making sure I'm safe, my family's safe, getting to work, doing my job, being hesitant. Just, and I never, I don't know the last time I felt like that.
Well, you can come back here and tell us. Come back here. This is great. So. Let's make a deal here. So, yeah.
Now I need a job.
Thanks for sharing so much of your reasons for stepping down, but hopefully you'll stay in the game in some way.
Yeah, I gotta stay in the game because, um, I gotta stay in the game. I gotta stay in the game. People have counted me out a few times. Um, you know, I had cancer a few times, and actually three times. And, um, you know, the whole bald head radiation, chemo thing, and I have MS. Which I've always been open about, that's not, not a big thing, and I have treatment for that. But I, again, I like how you say dominant society, but I don't, I don't let that define me. I don't go around saying I'm a cancer survivor. I don't go around saying, you know, I'm, you know, I, I don't do that. Because I have been so blessed, and I think you guys know this, too. Think of the people that have in this city, when I got a little bit older, that I mean, I think of Roberto Miestes, still, you know, Uncle Bob. I mean, I, you know, the gang of four. I have their book, and you know, I know them, I knew them personally, they watched me go through law school. Bernie, of course, you know, I was legal counsel on the board. I knew Bernie since I was a little girl, because him and my mom and my stepdad were close, my stepdad's Yakima. I owe all those ancestors and voices, I owe them, I owe them, and I don't know if the non-Indian world thinks that way. But I know we do, a lot of our ancestors and, and they're here, they're right here. And I, I owe them that, and if I do run for office again, it will be for them.
Well, we thank you for taking the time to just, just open your heart with us and be so candid, which we just really appreciate.
My first interview.
I know, I know, I know.
I was holding off, because I know Enrique was gonna say something if he, because he kept emailing us.
I kept, I kept texting you and saying-
If I go talk to Cairo or King Five or Crosscut or K O W or Joni Balter.
I would have had to come to your house and protest with a bullhorn.
Deborah Juarez, get on here.
Yeah, I have the whole Serna family, all hundred and, two hundred and three hundred of us, yes.
I don't want the Filipino, Asian, Mexican community out there screaming at me.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, uh, whatever you decide to do, uh, good luck, just know that you'll have our support. And I know that Matt, Matt is dealing with his own cancer and can relate to everything that you're going through. And, uh, we just really appreciate that you're willing to just be open and so open and honest. And that's what I've always appreciated about you. You're, you're just, you are no bullshit, and I love that, you know? No, really, and that, that is, I think, frankly, uh, that's what the council will really lose. Deborah Juarez, thank you so much for taking the time. We appreciate it, and, uh, good luck with what's ahead.
Thank you so much for having me, you guys.